Okay, City Attorney Dixon, is there any reportable action from the closed session?
Mayor Janeway, no, there is no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll take a very brief recess, maybe about thirty seconds until we're all up here.
But it might come in handy for the item. From me, but I gave it to Masser too. She's just kind of answering.
Good evening. I would like to call our regular city council meeting back to order at 7:05 PM. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Nathaniel Sevilla from Seventh Day Adventist Church to come forward for the invocation, and then we will have Cadet Girl Scout Troop 4512 come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor Lane. Let us bow our heads for prayer. Father God, we come to you this evening asking for your blessing. And God, in this blessing, we ask it to be of wisdom. And with wisdom, God, we ask for your understanding. And with that understanding, God, we ask for your direction. God, there is so much that you have asked us to do, where your Apostle Paul reminded us that we are to pray for our leaders. And so, God, we do that just now. We pray for our country. We pray for our president. We pray for our governor, our mayor, our men in uniform, all those in this chamber. We lift them up to you at this time, Father God. God, we acknowledge that you are Creator, and we are your creation. You are immortal, and we are mortal. We are here today and gone tomorrow. And so, God, we ask for your wisdom to be made known, that the decisions we make will be careful and thought out, and that they will be pleasing in your sight. We ask, God, that our decisions of policies made yesterday, today, and even tomorrow will not prevent, but propel your blessing. Father God, we ask not just for your whispers and words and wisdom, but we ask for your very presence to be in this hall. We ask, God, that we would heed your voice. We ask, God, that when we leave this place, that we would be uplifting you and not our own agenda and our own selves. And Father, as we leave this place, we ask that we would be a demonstrator of love and care for our fellow men. We ask that even our seniors will be shown honor. Our men will have been shown respect, love for our women, compassion for our children, and tender care for the disenfranchised. Father, we ask for your protection and your provision of your people. We ask that your prosperity will be amongst us. For we pray this all in the second person of the Godhead, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Audience, attention. Color Guard, advance. Color Guard, present the colors. Would the Honorable Mayor, City Council members, and audience please join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Audience may be seated. Would the City Council please join us?
Thank you, girls. That was excellent. Thank you so much for coming to our city council meeting today. Are there any parents here? Come on up. And how about troop leaders? Okay. Well, how about telling us your name, what school you go to, and your grade?
My name is Alexis. I go to Luisoviejo Middle School, and I'm in seventh grade.
My name is Allison. I go to Capo Valley Christian, and I'm in seventh grade.
Allison, what is the favorite badge that you earned on your vest? I see.
My favorite badge is night owl, the one where you stay up all night going camping.
My favorite one, I haven't put it on yet, but it's my babysitting one.
That is fantastic. Okay, so we'll take some pictures. Okay, we have a couple of presentations this evening. And our first presentation is a proclamation declaring May 2018 as Older Americans Month. And actually, I will be taking that proclamation to a luncheon at the Senior Center on May 18th. And then the next presentation is recognizing two very special women who help us out greatly here at City Hall. And it's a proclamation declaring May 6th through 12th as Municipal Clerks Week. At this time, I'd like to ask City Clerk Eileen Gomez and Deputy City Clerk Juana Lauer to please come forward for the presentation. Okay, this is a proclamation, whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering services to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves at the Information Center on Functions of Local Government and Community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Laguna Niguel City Council, do hereby declare the week of May 6th through 12th, 2018, as Municipal Clerks Week in the City of Laguna Niguel, and further extend appreciation to our City Clerk Eileen Gomez and our Deputy City Clerk Juana Lauer, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Thank you, ladies, very much. You know, the municipal clerk is a very vital function within our government. They are the keepers of our records and all papers, all things, and they keep us on track. But really, they are responsible for receiving the legal documents, fulfilling any records requests, the filing of candidates for office, so they have a very vital function to keep our government going. So thank you very much for all that you do for the City of Laguna Niguel. Okay, and our next presentation is a proclamation declaring May 6th through 12th as Safety Seat Checkup Week. And we'll be sending this proclamation to Safety Belt USA. This organization has been dedicated for more than thirty-seven years to protecting children from injury or death while being transported in a motor vehicle, and safety, as you know, is the highest priority of the City of Laguna Niguel, and we will be sending that to them. So we are done down here. We can go back up. Okay, and our last presentation this evening is on Economic Development by our City Manager, Christine Ridge. Christine?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. I'm pleased to provide you a brief presentation on our efforts to improve the economic vitality of our city. I'm going to first provide some background, and then I'm going to turn it over to our Community Development Director, Leslie Roseberry. So first, why should our city continue to engage in economic development activities? There are actually a number of reasons to have a robust economic development program. As a government, we do not directly invest in private sector, but what we do have the ability is to do, is to foster the right environment that can help existing businesses flourish and others that want to locate within our city. The benefit of a robust economic development program includes retaining and growing our tax base for community investment, and to help provide for the amenities that will contribute to the quality of life in Laguna Niguel, whether that is high-paying jobs or that unique dining or retail experience. The city does have a long history of creating a business-friendly environment and partnering with the local Chamber of Commerce. Most recently, the Economic Development Ad-Hoc Committee, including Mayor Janeway and Mayor Protem Jennings, has been meeting monthly to lay out a foundation for a solid program. This committee has focused on the following areas to further enhance our vibrant economy. We will walk you through some of the basic demographics, talk about our very important key revenue stream of sales tax, touch on some of the trends that we see happening right now, focus on some of our opportunities that lie before us, and highlight our current efforts to further cut red tape and market our city. Lastly, we'll go over the next steps that we will be taking in the very near future. Starting with demographics, understanding the key data and packaging it just right assists interested businesses when they decide to invest. Basic demographic information is available from a number of sources, including the U.S. Census Bureau, American Community Survey website, and the Center for Demographic Research. Starting with population, this chart shows the actual population from 2015, which is represented in the blue column, and then a five-year projection and a ten-year projection. The data is presented for the county as a whole, and then for our region of the county, and then down to, lastly, just for our city. The county as a whole is expected to grow 3.8% by 2020 and grow 6.3% by 2025. The south part of the county will experience a little slightly slower growth, and will grow by 3.7% by 2020 and projected to grow 4.0% by 2025. Our city is estimated to grow 3% by 2020 and 4.9% by 2025, and I'd say we are on track because the first blue number is sixty-five, and we already are closer to that sixty-seven number right now. Looking at the county's regional population by age shows that the county as a whole has matured, with the largest portion of the population being aged forty to sixty-four. So that would be the piece of pie that's a gray color and the yellow color, and you can see that it is the majority of our population of the county. When you compare this to the previous breakdown of population by age in 2012, the county is experiencing a significant increase in older individuals and a significant decrease in forty- to forty-nine-year-olds, along with a decrease in adolescents. This shifting demographic profile will have a significant impact on the types of services and retail needs of a community, if it continues. Another critical piece of information for economic development purposes is the household income in a given community. As you can see from this chart, the majority, approximately fifty-four percent of households in our city, have income in excess of $100,000. The average income per household is $136,000 compared to the average of the county, which is $61,000, close to $62,000. These are just a few of the demographics that are available to assist with the promotion of our city, and we plan to engage in a greater analysis, engaging with a consultant who will come in and dig down to the granular level and be able to present even further demographic information that will be very useful for us when we target certain businesses. As mentioned earlier, having a vibrant business base provides revenue for community investment. Sales tax revenue represents our second-largest general fund revenue stream, and for the most part, has grown year over year. The most recent available information is from the third quarter of 2017, which represents the receipts that we receive in the fourth quarter of 2017. And while the county shows an increase of 2.7, our actual receipts during the same time period remained essentially flat with a minimal decline of .4%. Our sales tax revenue from our city primarily comes from three different major industry groups. The largest, general consumer goods, makes up over $1 million of the 2.5. This group would include discount stores like Costco or Walmart, along with shoe stores, clothing stores. The second-largest group is autos and transportation, generating approximately $550 million of the 2.5 million. This would be your new car sales, auto leases, and transportation rentals. And the third-largest generator is restaurants. They generate nearly $300,000 for us in that 2.5 number. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Director Roseberry to complete the presentation on what's happening at the Community Development Counter.
Thank you. One of the things that we talked about at great length with the ad hoc committee are the trends, the retail and consumer trends. One of the most obvious that we've seen and experienced in our city are chain restaurants that have closed. And it's not specific to Laguna Niguel. It is nationwide. For instance, Coco's closed seventy restaurants in the southwest, so it's not specific just to our cities. But that does leave us with some opportunities to fill in that we'll talk about. We also talked about how to respond to these trends. I mean, we're looking at more personal service, less retail. We're looking at more nail salons, fitness groups coming in, as opposed to more retail clothing and shoes and goods, as opposed to services. Overall, we actually have a fairly low vacancy rate through our shopping centers. I think that it may seem higher simply because we've got some of our vacant restaurant pads that are so obvious and so visible, but we really do have a pretty good vacancy rate going. What we found is that, of course, we do have some restaurant opportunities. We do have some pads available. The map on the right, shown in red, are different commercial centers, and mixed in there are several restaurant pad opportunities. We do work closely, both planning and building, work very closely with the property managers as well as potential tenants that come in and are interested specifically for those restaurant pads. We'll sit down with them, bring in the building official, talk about what their tenant improvements might be, as they decide and kind of go through their due diligence as to whether or not this is going to be a good fit for them. We also look at these pads and these restaurant opportunity sites as a very high priority for the department as for the city. Certainly, our plan is if one comes in, that it is given the highest priority because we do want to see those restaurant opportunities come to fruition. We do stay in close communication with the property managers, and I'm happy to report that we do expect to have some announcements soon. But of course, those tenants and property managers want to roll out their announcements as they see best for their sites, but as soon as we can, we will keep you in the loop. The city has been business-friendly for quite some time. Our challenge is really how to package that and roll it out, make it obvious to everybody that's considering Laguna Niguel, and kind of showing what sets us apart. One of the things that has definitely set us apart is that the city does not require a business license. Most cities do, and we do not. That saves in time, process, and money for our different businesses. We continue to try and cut red tape wherever we can and show how we are different from the other cities. Most of our discretionary permits are processed administratively. Other cities have, most of them, go to the Planning Commission for approvals, review and approvals, where ours are mostly done administratively. Our plan check timeframes are very quick. We can do concurrent planning and building review, and that saves time on the front end for our businesses. And we are happy to sit down with them at any time during the process to either explain a condition or a requirement, anything to help them move things along. Another big key that is different for our city, for most other cities, is that we don't do a separate city process for alcohol sales. There are There are other cities that do a separate conditional use permit process that goes through the Planning Commission to sell beer, beer and wine, or liquor sales. And as I've stated a couple times, we have excellent relationships with our different shopping center property owners. One of our keys is to brand and market our city. So one of the things we're very happy to show is our new logo, to talk about our concierge services for our businesses and our property owners, homeowners, at our front counter. So you can see our new logo shows that there is a key, really the key to the city, key to the concierge service, for anybody that comes in and needs our assistance. And you will start to see this logo brought out more for brochures. This is the front and back cover of a brochure that we are working on right now, and we will incorporate the new logo into the department signage as well, so people can see where their concierge desks are. One of the things that comes up quite a bit that I want to touch on, because it really does seem to work pretty well, is how parking works. For our restaurants, we specifically have three types of restaurants, where you have retail food, the restaurant pads, and the inline retail. The retail food are things such as donut shops, yogurt shops, our pads, those are standalone, and the inline retail to restaurant. So our retail food establishments, we don't require additional parking requirements, we don't look at doing any kind of parking assessment, it's just considered retail because there's very little, sometimes no seating, so it doesn't really function as a traditional restaurant. The restaurant pads that we know around town that are opportunity sites, we don't need to do additional restaurant requirements for them because they're already parked for restaurants, so those stand as they are. Now, the inline-retail to restaurant, that's when we start having to look at the parking a bit, and that's when we do a parking observation study in concert with their minor use permit, and that is done by staff at the staff level, where we will go out and take a look at how the parking is in that particular center. We'll do it probably three times, looking at peak times, lunchtime, dinnertime, just to see if that new restaurant is going to provide any kind of impact to the parking. Now, the larger centers are fine, we don't even bother doing that for someplace like the Marketplace, which is definitely overparked. It's really when you look at the smaller centers where we have to keep an eye on that because we want people to be able to park and stay on that site, not spill over into another site, and this seems to be working pretty well. Now, years ago, the staff, these parking observations, these parking studies, were brought forth to Planning Commission for their review and their comment and approval, and that stopped back in about 2012, and so it's all done at the staff level now. And now, it takes us about probably 30 to 60 days to get through one of those restaurants, which takes far less time than it did prior to 2012. Now, in order to keep moving forward, we have a number of next steps. One of them is attending and promoting the city at the International Council of Shopping Centers Convention in Las Vegas. That is a huge convention and a lot of opportunities for the mayor and our city manager to talk to retailers and talk to them about our city. And we're going to continue to roll out our concierge program, not only with signage, but sort of the way that we approach and market the city so that people know that Laguna Niguel is different. We're going to be developing a discoverlagunaniguel.com website, and this is going to be specific to what's special about Laguna Niguel, our different shopping centers, what amenities we offer, and that's something that interested retailers or property owners can take a look at. As City Manager Ridge mentioned, we're going to look at a deeper analysis of the demographics in order to be able to target specific businesses. Businesses have specific things that they are looking for, and if they can see right up front what we have, they'll be able to tell that we're the great city for them to locate in. We're also going to continue to look at possible code changes, take a deeper look at our sign requirements, our parking requirements, other things to make it as easy as possible for our businesses and still keep up the quality that Laguna Niguel expects. And then finally, we were going to look at hosting a networking event for our commercial brokers and property managers to, again, as part of our rolling out of the concierge program and making sure that they've got faces to go with the names for the people that they want to connect with. And finally, our tagline, "Laguna Niguel: Remarkable." And that will be on all of our information as well. And that concludes our presentation, and we are here for any of your questions.
Okay, well, thank you, Director Roseberry, and thank you, City Manager Ridge. That's exciting, lots of good information. I know the committee's been working for several months now, making a lot of good progress, and I can't stress enough to our residents how important economic development is to our city, both in terms of sales tax revenue, in terms of the goods and services and benefits that are available to our residents, and also in jobs that are available for our residents as well. So did you have anything additional, or?
No, unless you have some more questions for either one of us.
Okay, Councilmember Davies?
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. In regards to the Shopping Center Convention, great job on this, and I love the concierge process that we're going to do. I think it really brings us up to another standard. We know what we're going to give to them to attract them to come. I guess my question is, as the two of you go to represent, what are you looking for in regards to filling up, say, the restaurants and things like that? What type of restaurants? What type, you know, I'm curious what you're going to be taking there.
Mayor, would you like me to answer that question? Okay. So one of the things that we are doing is we will have with us, both the mayor and I, we're going to have a little business card that points out all the wonderful things about Laguna Niguel and has a dedicated email, and it's going to be a very creative one that won't get lost on the desk of the attendees at that conference. So we'll be handing that out to showcase our city, but one of the things that we're, I'm already started to do, is secure appointments for us while we're there. And one of the things that's the most important that we've heard repeatedly through feedback and that we've discussed during these ad hoc meetings is the need for restaurants. Residents would like to see those restaurant pads filled, so that certainly is a target area. And the other area would be, as Leslie mentioned a little earlier, the shifting trends and the demographics. It's all about an experience now, so we certainly would also be targeting those, whether it's a retail and it's a shopping that creates a little experience added, or whether it's a restaurant that is combined with some type of experience. Those are the types of businesses right now that are, you know, not only a great amenity to have for the community, but they also create a regional draw. So I would say off the top of my head, it would be those two that we would be targeting, and I don't know if you have any to add to that, Mayor?
Well, I think those two, and then also, we want businesses that would complement what is going on with the economic development in our neighboring cities. We know in Dana Point, they have a very large harbor redevelopment going on. We're not going to duplicate that, but there are things that we could be bringing to our city that would complement it and then maybe draw some of their tourists into our city to spend a few dollars to.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Lindholm?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for doing this. I think it's a very important activity that you're doing because if people know that we have the parks and we have the maintenance for the parks, we have the streets, all the revenue for that comes from the businesses we have. So I'm happy to see, I think you're bringing it forward too, you're going to look at all the concurrent things you can do in terms of either fire or the parking studies. So if you're going to Planning or the Department, I'd love to see that concurrent so that you're not extending it. One thing I'd like to see that we have in other cities is outdoor eating areas and incorporate that into the permit process. We do have enough parking. Alicia, the Marketplace is totally overparked, it's parked for the busiest day of the year, so that there's a lot of excess parking. But if you have an outdoor space and that's built into the code, you could have, that would be very helpful. Most of the other cities have outdoor eating spaces. I'd like to make that easy for the people to do, and following the ABC codes, I mean, alcohol and all those codes, but make that happen. Can we also have a list of the sites and square footage available on our website? If somebody's going, "I need 40,000 square feet," can we have a list on the website? So, yes, I love Laguna Niguel, but my restaurant needs 85,000 square feet and a location. Can we have a list?
I believe we do already. I don't know if it has the square footage.
We do, we do maintain a list. I'll double-check and make sure that it's meeting what you think the needs are.
And it's highlighted, and it's easy to find sometime, a one or two click. I always think, if you have to click more than twice on a website, you've lost people.
We'll work on the one or two clicks, I'm not sure that that applies right now, but we'll make sure that we can get it there, and especially when we get our new website up and running.
Yes, not more than two clicks, it's, you're gone.
And Councilmember Lindholm, on the other request, that's one thing that the concierge service will do, it will help coordinate all of the plan checks that you need to go through by different departments, and even outside of the city. We've reached out to the Molten Niguel Water District because one of the feedback that we had heard is that some of the business owners are surprised as to what they have to do in order to meet the water district's need. So we're working closely with them to get a good understanding of their process so that we can help inform at our counter expectations for those people that are starting up a business in our city.
Okay, fantastic. Keep it up, keep us informed.
The only concern I have is a lot of residents are looking for quality restaurants. We don't have to go to Laguna Beach or Dana Point or Irvine Spectrum to have a nice dinner. And what everybody's been saying over the years that we want to invite them to the city and we want to keep them in the city. And parking code would be one of the areas that I think the Community Development Department, the Planning Division needs to look at. In comparison with other cities, you go to other cities like Santa Monica or the beach communities, to be more specific, their parking requirements are so tight that it would deter a lot of new businesses by going there and just starting new restaurants. So as long as we can work along those lines, I advocate for this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to echo a couple of things. One is, this is not even the full scope of what we've been discussing on the Economic Development Committee. One of the goals that we had was not only to meet our immediate needs, which is certainly a goal, but also to think very prospectively. What is our city supposed to look like five, 10, and 15 years from now, and how do we plan on that now? And one of the trends that we talked about is this, it's a concerning trend from what was retail, which spends off dollars that we use to buy things and make the city nice, to service organizations, which doesn't. And not that either one of those are better or worse, but one judged to earn some tax income, so we need to create or keep a very strong balance on that, and that's been very intentional. So I am very excited to see what comes out of our meeting in May, we've been planning on that for a long time, I think it's very special. This concierge-level service is not really done anywhere else, this is something that is unique that we're trying to offer because we are that type of towns, we're very excited to see that. So I appreciate that and good luck.
Okay, thank you, and the Economic Development Committee will keep all of you very informed of what we're doing, and we look forward to your input as we go along. But I think, as Mayor Protem said, we've been working on a lot more than what was just presented, so we're really excited about the progress that we're making. Okay, any more questions on that? Okay. So we'll now move on to our next item, which is public communications. Any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter, whether or not it appears on the agenda, is required to complete a gold-colored Request to Speak form, which is available on the counter near the door. Please submit the completed form to the city clerk prior to being heard by the city council. Each person will be allowed three minutes to speak, and I have some Request to Speak forms right here. So, first up tonight is Bill Lieber.
Hi, my name's Bill Lieber, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Chamber. Nice segue going in here. Thirty-six years ago, on May 11th, Laguna Niguel Chamber had their very first installation at El Niguel Country Club. Some of the members of that steering committee are still involved with our organization today. That would be Carol Bowman, David Russell Orem, Betty Bucat, and Rick Van Alstine. Those members were dedicated to harvesting a healthy business community. Just to give you an idea of what's changed since 1982, that first meeting and today, the President of the United States was Ronald Reagan, the average income was $21,000, the average new car was $7,900, movie ticket was $2.50, gasoline was $0.91 a gallon, postage stamp was $0.20 a gallon, and for Councilman Minigar, the average yearly tuition to Harvard was $6,930. So a lot of things have changed over the last 36 years. The Chamber is constantly evolving with this changing world, and we don't do it alone. We want to thank the community, the city council, for being such a great partners and for being so business-friendly. You know, I have to read a script, right? Thank you.
Okay, next is Luke Burson. Please speak directly in the microphone and state your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Luke Burson, I live at 25646 La Sima in Laguna Niguel, and in July, I will be a 30-year resident of this fine city. And I feel like I've done this before. So the purpose of being here tonight is I want to talk about the Sunpoint Development Proposal Approval Process, not the proposal, because that was dealt with two weeks ago and it's going to be dealt with in four weeks, but I thought it would be appropriate, when it's not on the agenda, to give you my perspective of the process. And unfortunately, it's not positive, and so I wanted to take this time to share that. I would go so far to say that my conclusion is the process particularly favors the developer and puts the residents and the community on ignore, and that's sad. So let me explain why. And let me start with, two years ago, when we first engaged, it was in 2016, and I became involved, and you know I've been very actively involved the entire time, and we met with city staff, and those first meetings, I really felt like I was being convinced that this was a good proposal and I was being sold. Now, staff was cordial and polite and available, but the communication was that this is good for the city, and I'm not the only one that experienced that. Not too long after that, there was a Meet, what was it called? It was Meet the Community, and one of the members on the Planning Commission at the time spoke very favorably about the Sunpoint proposal, insomuch to say that it was good for the city and would be approved. Now, the community reacted, "How can it be approved? We're very early in the process." Well, as we dug into it, we learned that the approval process was going down a mitigated negative declaration, which is the light version of the SEQA process, and it didn't allow for alternatives to be considered, and it didn't really allow for the deep dive. It was only through the community's relentless pursuit of an EIR that that was changed, and so we believe we made that happen. So once that happened, we were able to give feedback on both initially the mitigated negative declaration, but then later on the EIR. There were over 70 residents that gave feedback. The questions that were asked, it's hard to add them up, but I believe it was in excess of 100, it might have been 200, there were many duplicates.
You have 30 seconds?
Oh. Of those duplicates, not, of those questions, not one changed the outcome of the EIR, and it appeared that the EIR was predestined, and there was nothing the community can do. So if I've got 30 seconds, I need to jump to the most important part. At the council meeting on the 17th, all of you, and Councilman Minigar, you didn't participate, all said the 71 home development you would not approve. Some said it was a bad proposal.
That's your time?
Please finish your sentence.
Thank you. Yet, city staff, city's consultants, the EIR, and your Planning Commission all approved it. And Mayor, you said sometimes we have to use common sense, and that was the first time there was any common sense. And my concern is, is why would everyone in the process approve 71 homes, except for the community, and you four? Something's wrong. We were not heard, we were put on ignore, and only when it came to your level did the community... community's position become important, and you supported us.
Thank you, Mr. Burson. Okay, Lacy and Enzo Johnson.
Good evening, City Council Members. My name is Lacy Johnson.
And I'm Enzo Johnson. And this is our sister Coco. In 2011, when we were one and three years old, our family became aware of the dangerous public safety issue taking place at San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station, only 31 miles from our home in North County, San Diego. Now that I am eight and Lacy's 10, we're able to speak for ourselves, and we're asking you, Council Members, to help ensure the safety of children like us here in Laguna Nigal and all of Southern California for generations to come. Please do not allow Southern California Edison and Holtek to abandon San Onofre's radioactive waste on our beaches in San Diego County. It is our great, great, great grandchildren who will inherit this problem if we do not address it now. This would mean no more surfing, sailing, snorkeling, or any ocean sports that all Southern Californians love to do. Thank you for listening and doing everything you can to protect the homes, health, and ocean-loving lifestyle here in Laguna Nigal. I know that you will do the right thing to keep all children here safe from a nuclear disaster at San Onofre. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I have a gold slip for Torgan Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council Members, and City Staff. My name is Torgan Johnson. I'm from Solana Beach. I'm the father of four, and I'm a Harvard-trained urban planner. In 2013, my family hosted the former Chairman of the U.S. Nuclear Regulatory Commission and the former Prime Minister of Japan, Mr. Naoto Kan, who dealt with the Fukushima disaster, to speak at the San Diego County Administrative Center at a public conference that my family organized titled Fukushima: Ongoing Lessons for California. Shortly afterwards, Southern California announced the permanent shutdown of the San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station due to self-destructing reactor units. The Prime Minister's Lessons for California are: Number one, severe nuclear accidents happen, so plan for them. Number two, the Prime Minister was most concerned about the nuclear waste at Fukushima, not the reactors melting down. Number three, had he lost control of the stored nuclear waste, he was preparing an emergency order to permanently evacuate the city of Tokyo, 160 miles away from the waste. Tokyo is the largest city in the world with a metropolitan population of over 50 million people. When you talk about economic development here, keep in mind what's happening at San Onofre right now. I am here tonight representing a coalition of business leaders, elected officials, scientists, former military leaders, and concerned citizens in San Diego County who are deeply concerned about the nuclear waste plan being implemented at San Onofre right now. The public's concerns are not being taken seriously, including those of a high-level radioactive waste policy advisor for presidential administrations. His name is Dr. Tom English. Also, the former Rear Admiral in charge of the U.S. Navy Southwest Region from here to China, Rear Admiral Len Herring, is also deeply concerned about what an accident at San Onofre with the waste would mean to Camp Pendleton and our national readiness for self-defense. The radioactive waste canisters that are being implemented are thin, unmonitored, they can't be repaired, and the first four that were loaded are defective. The fuel assemblies build hydrides inside of these canisters, which are explosive. We've not been told that. The site hazards, which are quakes, tsunamis, and terrorism, are not taken seriously. Impossible emergency response is due to the fact that the consultants for Southern California Edison said that their plan be if one of these canisters leaks, is that the canister will be shipped off to Idaho to a facility there. Well, that facility was demolished in 2009.
You have 30 seconds.
Southern California, San Diego County cities are concerned, and you should be too. You're about 14 miles from the waste. I ask that you agendize the San Onofre radioactive waste issue so that independent experts can be brought to your council to discuss what is not being discussed at Edison's Organized Citizens Engagement Panel. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, City Clerk Gomez, are there any additional requests to speak? Okay, Public Communications is now closed. We will now move on to our Consent Calendar, items 1 through 14. And I'd like to note that on item number three, the minutes for the City Council Meeting on April 17th, on page four, we will be voting on the current version that is highlighted in your red folder. I am also pulling item number nine for comments. We have a gold slip to pull item number 14. And are there any additional items to be pulled?
No, I'd like to join you on item number nine when you're done.
Okay. Councilmember Davies?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the remaining.
Okay, well, let's see down here first. Councilman Minigar?
Items number one and number seven.
Councilman Min, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. I have to note one abstention on check number, on item number one, check number 96331. I looked it up, and the work that was done was done within 500 feet of my home, so I don't want to vote on that. As well as item number five, I'll abstain from. It's a Community Development Block Grant, and two of the proposals involve ADA push-button installation and access ramps, which I understand are in an intersection, which is near my home, so I don't want to vote on that either.
Okay, thank you.
Other than that, I don't have anything else to pull.
Okay, City Clerk Gomez, did you get those abstentions from Mayor Pro Tem? Okay. Okay, Councilmember Davies?
I'll go ahead and make, no, nothing. I'm good.
So, you're moving to?
Unless you have something you want to pull.
No, I already polled. I'm waiting for your motion.
I'm making a motion to move the remaining.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Davies, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Jennings to move the balance of the Consent Calendar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions have been noted. Okay, so now we will go on to item number one. Councilmember Minigar?
On item number one, just for potential conflict of interest for the check number 96315, that's why I'm recusing myself from item number one.
Okay, so let's go back on what we, did you get that, City Clerk Gomez? So, Councilman Minigar has also abstained from an item on the warrant register, and you have the check number. Okay. Okay, item number?
I'll make the motion.
I thought we already, we already approved the?
He pulled it before we voted on the remainder, so that one's still open. So, we need, you'll need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve. Mayor Pro Tem?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions have been noted.
Thank you.
We're all good now. Okay. Item number seven. Councilman Minigar?
On item number seven, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, for this $1.87 million, I wanted to know why only two companies submitted proposals. Was it properly advertised?
Mayor, Councilmembers, yes, it was. And we had a mandatory pre-bid meeting. At that meeting, five companies showed up and signed the sheet. And they had a number of questions that we responded to. But out of the five companies that did show up, we only got two proposals.
And the second question is, I don't know the firm of MCE. Have you checked with the city of Diamond Bar and the city of Dublin in Northern California?
Yes, we did check the, with their client cities. We did get excellent reviews. In fact, city of Diamond Bar recently increased the contract service area with them. And as I mentioned, we did receive excellent reviews by their client cities.
Very good. Thank you. If there are no other comments on item number seven, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, are there any additional comments or questions on this item? Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilman Minigar, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Jennings to approve item number seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, carries. Okay. Consent Calendar, item number nine, the approval of the plan and bid documents to advertise construction of the new Crown Valley Park community building Tier III improvements. City Manager Ridge?
If you'd like a staff report, I will ask NASA, our Director of Public Works, to provide that for you.
Okay, do you want a staff report, Councilmember Lindholm?
No, unless you would like one.
No, I would like to go straight to my questions.
Okay.
Okay. A couple of questions. When I was looking at this, I know we've had some ad hoc committee meetings on Tier III. And at those meetings, I requested that we take a look at some iconic element in front of the new building. This is a beautiful new building, but we need something that says, "This is Laguna Nigal." And I don't, I haven't received anything back from the design team. I haven't received anything back, and there's nothing in this report. So, I'd like to know what the status of that is and when we are going to get something to look at, and whether or not it should be incorporated in this, or will we handle that separately. The other item I'd like to take a look at is the bollards. I'd like something a little more decorative. We're doing a beautiful, it's going to be close to $30 million when it's finished. And I think for safety reasons, for what we've seen going on, on the national and international scene, that that is something for the safety of the pedestrian in this area, we do need. But they can be a little more decorative than what I'm seeing. So, those are two items that I want to, would like to have some more information on.
Okay, Honorable Mayor, the item is really just to approve for them to advertise it to bid. I don't think that there's a reason to delay that item tonight, and I believe we can still address the two concerns that you noted. For an iconic artwork piece in the front of the building, that is something would be the very last element added to the building. And it's something that we could procure in a number of ways. So, I would recommend for that, that we do reform the ad hoc committee, or a subcommittee for that matter, to make recommendations on how to go about bringing iconic art to the building. On the other item, the bollards, there probably would be, we obviously have to have power and we also have lighting to it. So, any substantial change in that, we probably need to look at a little more closer. But I don't think those changes would prohibit us from going out to bid with the current plans.
Okay. Councilmember Lindholm?
Thank you. I'm so excited about this. I'm sorry. It's
You should be.
It's been so long coming. You did a great job. I have no questions on the building. I think the building is, is going to serve the community very well. It's going to, what we're discussing is the taking down of the very old, kind of crumbling, community center building that's in our Crown Valley Park. And putting up, as you know, the process has been quite well advertised, and the new building construction. So, I'm very much in support of that. Way back when, we, prior councils and this council, and I'm very grateful to this entire council, we had a dream of having an iconic kind of fixture in our Crown Valley Park. And I think the Splash Park and that has done it. I think the bridge is very pretty. The building itself is going to be very functional. I'm happy with the bridge, and I'm happy to support that. But the outdoor plaza, the dream was to have maybe a Jacaranda Festival, to have tall lights where you could string market lights, and you could have events for the community. You could have events at Christmas or holiday times where you had snow come down. You could have singers. You could have all of that. So, it needs, it needs this warm, welcoming, iconic feature at the front. We've kind of had the theme of the state symbols, which I do have pictures of briefly, if you'll bear with me. This is our state bird, the quail. So, it could be somehow incorporated into, into the front, educational for the kids. This is absolutely beautiful. This is the dog-faced butterfly. I did not know. I could have quizzed you. This, this is the state butterfly. And of course, the turtle. It's awesome. So, and the bear. But, so this should be an iconic fixture. When we travel around the world, when we go to Chicago, when we go anywhere, there are iconic features. So, I'm hoping that we have those things where you go, "I met my, my, my children are playing here," and they're playing by the quail, they're playing by that. So, I'm counting on LPA, our wonderful mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council to make this, that kind of, we went not just to the building, we went here. So, I'm hoping on the plaza. And then I did bring, because this has been a long dream of mine. I'm sorry, guys. And thank you. I did bring some bollards. There have been instances, like when I was in London, where, you know, children were hurt or adults were hurt with cars. We need bollards that are protecting of those people who are enjoying those activities. So, I'm going to give all those diagrams and pictures to our wonderful City Council. And hopefully, they come back with some great ideas and protect the children and the adults while they're there, maybe having an art contest or whatever. But, so, I'm hoping. But I will totally support the measure as it is, and be happy to follow whoever wants to make that motion. But I think our plaza needs to be, come back. And so, I'm just looking, it's been an eight-year dream. I'm sorry, guys.
I don't apologize. This is your vision, and we are all benefiting from it. So, thank you very much, Councilmember Lindholm.
Thank you, and I'll pass these over.
I would like, though, to have some kind of a plan as when are we going to be getting some of this design back? I don't want to leave it hanging out there as it has been for a couple of months.
Okay, we can get the ad hoc, if you want the full ad hoc that's been working on this improvement project, together within the next two weeks, and then determine the best path forward. I think for the, an iconic art piece, in my experience, the best way has been to actually commission it from an artist. And, I mean, there is an added expense to that. Without a water feature, it does keep the cost down a little lower. But, you know, for an iconic piece, you could spend upward of $20,000 for something like that. But we can get that meeting scheduled and begin those discussions right away. This really would be the last elements added to the project, so we have quite a bit of time to make decisions on it.
And I believe LPA in our meeting was going to come back with some ideas. And I don't know if they have sent anything, forwarded anything to staff on this yet, or?
Director Espaza, I can't say your last name. I'm sorry. Director Naster, have you received anything?
Just to briefly remind the ad hoc committee members, you may recall that there were some bid alternates for this project. And the goal was to bring the numbers back to the ad hoc committee, and at that time, discuss the art pieces and other decorative elements. So, as the City Manager mentioned, we can either convene a meeting in a couple of weeks or wait till the bid's coming. As the City Manager pointed out, some of these features that we're talking about, they're at least a year away before they need to be put in place. So, we can wait till the numbers come back. The bid opening is, I believe, June 19th. So, we can bring back the numbers, look at the bid alternates, and at that time, we'll look at design features as well.
Okay, yeah.
If I may, I have a
Councilman Minigar?
For Councilmember Linda Lindholm, your points are well-taken. I totally agree with you. But at this juncture, we are deciding on approving the PSNE package to move ahead, to go ahead with the project. Beautification revitalization maybe ought to be done, you know, later on. So, we can revamp.
Yeah, and I think our concern with discussing it tonight is to make sure that still
Oh, absolutely. I'm in favor.
Still in process and that it's not lost.
Oh, absolutely. I'm with, I'm with her.
Sure that that continues.
Well, and I totally agree with you. I mean, as I said, I'm going to move this entire package forward as it is, and I'm happy, I don't know, I'd be happy to make this motion for this project. But if there's any electrical, like if we want light poles or those kinds of things, they need to be thought about as you go forward. So, the thought should be there, that we're not going to have to go back and dig up any decorative items so that we can make these improvements in the future. Or, we don't want to order the plain little light things that are not going to protect our pedestrians or have good light. So, that's the only reason to bring it up now.
Did I hear a motion?
You did hear a motion.
I'll second it. It's been moved by Councilmember Lindholm, seconded by Councilmember Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries unanimously. Okay, Consent, item number 14, Support for Actions Reducing Airplane Overflight Impacts on Residents. We do have a Request to Speak. City Manager Ridge, is there a report, or would we like to go to? City Manager Ridge, is there a report, or would we like to go to public comments?
It's up to you, Mayor, we can provide you a staff report for it, or wait till the public comment, and then maybe answer specific questions.
Okay, let's go that way. Ken O'Leary.
Good evening, Mayor Genaway, Ken O'Leary, fifteen Marseille, Laguna Niguel, and also twenty-five years, but also the member of the Citizens for No Plane Noise, and I think it was last May, there were four hundred people in here, and it's full of energy, opposed to the airplane noise, and since then, many things have happened. I will, rather than rehash it all, 'cause I was gonna get right to it, we most recently had some meetings with the supervisors, our group met, I think about a week ago, with three of the supervisors in separate meetings, and it seems like things might go forward, but right now, I would tell you that the overall message, and we could be hearing it wrong, and there'll be, we have another meeting next week with the airport, but generally, it's saying that everything's been approved, the settlement's been done, everything, and the worst part is Lisa Bartlett, and I wanna stress this, I wasn't there, four people from our group were there, but what we heard, and we'll make sure that what we're hearing isn't correct, and we hope it's not correct, but we're gonna keep an eye on it. What we heard is that the airport wants to expand the runways, and they wanna put bigger planes, and so on and so on. And not only do they not wanna do anything for this group, and address our concerns, we're gonna, we're gonna keep pushing on it, and it's not over with, but I just want, that's sort of an update where we're at, what we're gonna do is keep pressing. This agenda item, we love it. And I wanna, I wanna thank the mayor, I wanna thank the City Manager, and I even wanna thank the City Attorney, there was some really strong language in there. And the main point of this resolution is that this is the airport owned by our supervisors. They were in this room last year, and they made promises. They didn't do it. And now they wanna expand the airport. Well, as an airport owner, and I think Terry Dixon used the word proprietor, it's a legal term, that they're the proprietor, and they can override the FAA, and they can listen to us, and we have evidence that shows in two thousand and nine, there were zero planes flying on the path that actually hits Dana Point, zero. And right now, there are sixty planes a day, those are the planes that are also affecting us here.
You have thirty seconds.
Okay, thank you. Some people aren't bothered by it, but I can assure you, there is a thousand people that signed our petition, and most of them are from Laguna Niguel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Do Councilmembers have any questions? Would you like a staff report, or you fully briefed on it?
I was...
I don't see any heads nodding. Is there a motion to approve consent item number fourteen?
I'd make that motion. I would like to make a comment on it before we get to, if you wanna make a motion and have comments, that's fine too, but I had some comments on it beforehand.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Protem Jennings, seconded by Councilmember Lindholm. We will now pause for comments. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I've always been tracking this very closely for over a year, I was initially hopeful, and somewhat optimistic, because I knew that our local representative, Roy Barker, had a number of amendments in front of the FAA that would have addressed this, not only in our region, but as well as Long Beach as well. I'm told that those were, they died in the first committee they hit in Congress, which shows you where the impetus outside of Orange County and our region is in DC, and I suspect it's nil. I did contact Roy Barker's office, I did request that the FAA people he met with meet with us, and have called them into our district to try to find out what it is that they know, and what they said, to see what it is that we can do, and I've talked to the City Manager about doing that as well. You know, this is a great concern, I think we are a very small part of a very big machine. We are expressing our voice tonight against the airplane noise, and in favor of doing anything we can to mitigate it, and anything we can is not a lot, but we will apply what pressure we have in the places that we have to apply it, and I think it's, this is a very strong move at the right time, so.
Any other comments? Well, I greatly appreciate all the work that the residents have done for the no jet noise, I mean, this is something that, you know, just happened. It happened to your quality of life, it's, they're flying overhead over your homes, it, your neighborhood was not like that probably when you bought your homes, and now it's a decision made by the federal government and the FAA. I was very disappointed to learn that this week, or no, last week, that Congressman Roybacher's three amendments did not make it out of committee, and that's why I think it's very important then, for our residents then, to work with residents in other states who are impacted by this as well, because we do need to have the joining of forces on the federal level, and for people to understand how this so negatively impacts what's going on in your daily life. So the city does support you on this, this is why we have this resolution, we will continue to follow it, and I know City Manager is contracting for some sound monitors, so that we can have some accurate readings to say, "This is what is happening in our neighborhood, and what's happening." So are there any other additional comments, or City Manager Ridge, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
No, just, I'm glad that you mentioned the temporary sound monitoring that we will be doing, which will produce, and we are going to request that the contractor does a single event monitoring as opposed to an averaging. And then with that, we will have the information, so we can make a factual determination, if in fact, there's a violation of our local noise ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Davies?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna piggyback on that, regards to the noise monitoring, do we know what type of, how long this is gonna take? Is it a six month process, is it three months?
Public Works Director received a services quote for us from the firm, and it's the same firm that does the sound monitoring around John Wayne Airport. There's a menu of items that we're gonna select from, but we believe we're gonna head in the direction of at least having a two, two event monitoring, which would be a twenty-four hour period. And then along with that, we can also request the reports, what they will do is, when they do detect a certain level of decibel reading, they will then match it up with the flight patterns, and be able to identify for us if the plane was from John Wayne, and what altitude it was flying at. What it will not be able to do, though, is if it's not from John Wayne Airport, we won't know if it was from LAX or Long Beach.
Is this over a month, or I'm just wondering how long this study will take?
You can, you can establish it, you can do one day one week, and one day the next week. Right now, we're still trying to determine what would be the best locations in the city to do the measurement.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I know City Manager Ridge is also working with some of the residents on helping establish the locations.
Correct.
So it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries unanimously. Okay, so there's no other discussion items this evening, so we'll now move on to other business and council reports. So we have some ad hoc committee meetings, who would like to discuss the bus shelter?
You want me to do that? I'd be happy to, thank you, Mayor. We met again this week for what we think is the last ad hoc committee for the bus shelters, we have put that into final, we anticipate having that back to you during the, I think the second meeting, is it the first meeting or the second meeting in May?
Second meeting.
Second meeting in May. So we will have the new design, the new concepts, the pricing on everything, and just so you know what you will be getting out of that, it's a complete removal of the existing bus shelters as they look, a new design, which would go in, has a single pole and a cantiletered roof, it also involves seating and trash receptacles, and we've looked into everything, including the textures that it's all going to be, and the types of concrete and things that will go on it. I have to say, and I think I'm speaking for Councilmember Minigar as well, I've been very, very pleased with the speed at which this has been moving, how it looks, and as I drive around town, I literally can't wait to see what they look like out there, because we've done so many wonderful beautification processes in town, and there are still a few things around, like, "Well, that just doesn't look right." Piggybacking on top of that is a series of concepts that we're still working through, which we're gonna ask that the council chime in on when we do that, and that is, how to independently brand the trolley stops, which are also along the way for the trolley that's coming. So we have come up with some designs, which I think are clever and cool, and they really stand out, they're internally lit, they're captivating for the people that drive back and forth to work in the mornings, to say, "Oh, what is that, and what's this trolley?" And I think it's gonna draw some attention. We are blessed with funding, because we have, I think it's two hundred thousand dollars now that was from a grant, we are expecting another five hundred thousand dollars, if I'm getting any of that wrong, on how the money's coming in, but we're receiving that money into the city. And that should allow us, assuming the numbers come back, to do almost everything that we want to do, and spend very little of the city's money in doing so, for something that will have an immediate benefit. So if you, if you haven't yet, I encourage you to drive around and look at the bus stops as they currently are, you will then not be able to stop seeing them. The new bus stops don't have, they don't have any advertising on them, they're very clean, very cool, they're internally lit with solar panels and low-density LED lights that are recessed up into the lip of the facility, so it doesn't cast any light off into other pedestrians or street cars, or streets, cars on the street. So it's, I think it's fairly well thought out, and I'm really excited to see it, so you'll be the arbiter of that in a couple of weeks, but other than that, we've had great progress.
Okay, did you wanna add anything, Councilmember?
No, very well said.
Okay, very good. Now you have us excited to see, okay. The ad hoc Economic Development Committee, that committee did not meet since our last council meeting, so now we'll go on to council reports. Who would like to start? Councilman Minigar?
All right, on Wednesday, April the eighteenth, along with Mayor Genaway, and our Police Chief McDaniel, and Sergeant Songer, we went to Molton Elementary School to conduct a safety and security inspection of the facility. It was a very educational trip, we spent almost two hours there, looking at the fences, and looking at the ramification of potential events, what happens if someone would be coming to the school without proper IDs, and basically, the entire parameter that, at the present time, they only have two closed second television cameras that was donated to them, and they are looking for more donations by PTA and other organizations. So it's the first school, I believe, that we did the safety and security, and I'm very hopeful that the Capital Unified School District, because the president of Capital Unified School District, Martha, was also present to hear, you know, the issues and the problems from the facility's manager. So that's the first, I guess, meeting. The second one is on Friday, April twentieth, on behalf of the TCA, I attended the Earth Day Celebration at the Plain Air Event at Opera Chiquita Conservation Area, which is at State Route two forty-one, and also Parkway, and I didn't realize that the Transportation Corridor Agency of Orange County has purchased the land, which is a huge place, is a jewel of Orange County, it's a hidden place, and nobody knew about it, including myself, that it's a reserved area for the habitats. So it was a very educational trip there. And on Saturday, I attended the Earth Day Event at the Niguel Botanical Preserve, it was a great event with a lot of volunteers, a lot of Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and the Parks and Rec Department, Public Works Department did a superb job for the event. On Tuesday, April twenty-fourth, I attended the All Hands Event with Laguna Niguel Police Department and Orange County Sheriff Department's representatives, to recognize the people in the uniform that serve and protect our sixty-six thousand population. It was a great event, and everyone showed up again. On behalf of the City Council, I wanted to extend my personal and our council appreciation for what you do for us, to keep us safe at all times. On Wednesday, April twenty-fifth, along with Councilmember, not to steal your item, Laurie Davies, I attended the Traffic and Transportation Commission, and I'm very pleased with the outcome of the decision by the commissioners. It was a well-attended meeting, and I'm very happy that the residents that showed up, they were very pleased with the outcome of their decision. On Thursday, April twenty-sixth, I attended four different events, the first one was the city's ad hoc committee with Mayor Protem, John Mark Jennings, the second one was at the City Hall of City of Irvine, along with other district directors. I attended the Orange County Council of Governments, I represented all the coastal cities of Orange County, which is Laguna Beach, Dana Point, San Juan Capistrano, San Clemente, Aliso Viejo, and obviously, our beautiful city, with regard to all the decisions that the thirty-four cities would be making, mostly related to Southern California Association of Governments. Then in the afternoon, along with Mayor Genaway, not to steal your item, I attended the Niguel Hills Middle School Evening of Arts and Music Exhibition and Performance, and I'm very pleased with our middle schoolers, who says Laguna Niguel doesn't have talent? You should have been there. And then last but not least, not to steal your item, my good friend, Mayor Protem, John Mark Jennings, I attended Laguna Niguel Sports Advisory Committee. And then on Friday, April twenty-sixth, I attended the Orange County Sheriff Department's thirtieth Celebration of the Medal of Valor, I don't wanna elaborate on that, I leave it to my colleagues. And then the last item on Saturday, last Saturday, I attended the Taste of Aliso Niguel, which was a great success, more than seventeen hundred people showing up.
Two thousand.
It was a great event. Just one item for potential discussions, and this is in reference to the Coastal Green Belt Authority. I represent our city at the Coastal Green Belt Authority, and it's typically, every other month, every, let's see, it used to be every third Thursday of the month, we used to meet at the City Hall of City of Laguna Woods. There are about twenty elected officials on the roster, and quite frankly, I've been a member of that, that I was appointed since day one, that I was in the City Council during the past four years. Anytime that I attended, it was basically myself, and maybe five or six other elected officials. Our position, I mean, we have old timers here, Councilmember Linda Lindholm knows that, and my colleagues, for that meeting, we are not a voting member, so our vote would not count. And then, because they wanted to attract more members to show up, they changed the timing. The timing used to be at five PM, that I could always squeeze into my busy schedule, but because they wanted to attract more, and then they said the Parks and, the Orange County Parks Staff wanted to have it during the week, I mean, weekday hours, between eight AM and five PM, they've changed that to the second Wednesday of the month, and the next one's gonna be on May the ninth, at three PM, at the City Hall of Laguna Woods. So my view on that is, either they have to change the way we vote, because if we don't vote, quite frankly, I don't know what would be the benefit that we as a city would be getting out of it, except getting a lot of valuable information about how the parks operate, and getting, and getting, receiving all kinds of statistics about, you know, the status of the parks. So with that, because I'm the chairman of the toll roads for San Joaquin Hills, we have a lot of, a lot of meetings, a lot of legal meetings, a lot of ad hoc committees that I have to take care of that. So on that note, I wanted to just put it for discussion, that, you know, if we need to still be active, to have a representative there, because I cannot make it, or like a lot of other cities that I never see their reps, like City of Irvine, like City of, I can go on and on and on.
Well, I think our City Manager Ridge, I think she can look into that, and maybe make a recommendation on our status.
Absolutely, that's what I would wanna do, research on how we became a member, if it's a member that's assigned by this council, and I can present that to you at our next council meeting on May fifteenth, I know that doesn't help you for the meeting on the ninth, but certainly, if I'm available, I could go, so we don't miss out on any information.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Minigar. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I should probably file a police report with the, with police services for all of my things being stolen. being stolen by Councilmember Minigar.
We all should.
We may all join in that report, so if you could prepare the paperwork, Chief, that'd be great.
Mayor Protem, guess who's going last next time? Shall we vote on that?
It's good to have the gavel, as I say. Wanted to, speaking of police services, I wanted to say a huge thank you to Chief McDaniel and Laguna Nigal Police Services. They invited all the council to the All Hands Breakfast. We were very fortunate to be there, very honored to be there. We were joined with, by Sandra Hutchins, our sheriff, and Don Barnes, our undersheriff, as well as the entire command staff for Laguna Nigal and our region. And I don't know, I felt a sense of pride all day long being around that, and it was, it was a very, very good experience, and I just want to say thank you for all you all do, and it was good to see all those faces in the same room. A couple of echoing, one of the things that Councilmember Minigar said, I've had two meetings along with the mayor and others with Capistrano Unified School District over the past month, primarily relating to emergency operations and what we do. We have a, we have a, I guess it's a quarterly, is it monthly? Quarterly meeting with CUSD to make sure that the city and, and the school district are in sync on ideas, and it's an opportunity to share ideas and exchange information. This month was focused on emergency operations. Most of that was, I think, following in on the Florida shooting, and it was brought back into our minds again, so we just want to make sure that we had a handle on it. We met this past, this week at the Emergency Operations Center at Capistrano Unified, and got a full rundown of how that worked. The city manager was able to join us at that as well. We are intricately involved with their, their protocols on how people are notified, how parents and students, and reunification of families comes after, after big events like this. It's very well in hand, and that was the second of those two meetings they had with, the second was with, most of the electeds in South County were invited, and there was a committee there, and it was very well attended, so I was pleased to do that. I am also the trustee for the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control Board for, for our city, and this is by way of a reminder to our residents, we are entering mosquito season. I will remind you that the mosquito is by far the most deadliest animal on the earth. It kills many people. It harms in great and meaningful ways people who live right here in Orange County, and it's very easy to control. So if you would, please go check your backyards and make sure the water is out of the pots that you have plants back there, and if you have any standing water or puddles or anything like that, it takes literally thimbles full of water for these very aggressive, evasive, they're called 80s egypti mosquitoes, to, to lay their eggs. And even after that dries after last season, if you have a pot and water's reintroduced into that, the eggs from last year is still viable, and they'll still grow into mosquitoes. They are extremely aggressive. They, they carry all sorts of bad things, and you want to avoid that. So I'm going to show, and I've asked the permission from the mayor and from the city manager, there's a very, very, very compelling video that I'd like to show, I think at our next city council meeting, is that right?
I thought it was going to be today, but...
I thought it might have been today, but we'll, we'll get that back. Essentially, it's, it's a family that was ruined by a single mosquito bite, and, you know, the person was paralyzed, and just what that means, and so if, you know, mosquito and vector control doesn't really get a great rap, you know, it's not a, it's not one of the, the bigger assignments on the council, but I can, I can tell you that it's extremely important, and we have it right here. So if you're sending your kids outside, you're going to the park, use the type of sunscreen that has mosquito repellent in it. It doesn't take much to stop it, but it is extraordinarily important. And, and that job, I see month after month after month, reports of people who are stricken with West Nile virus, and it is completely debilitating, if not sometimes lethal, so please guard your children. So with that, that's all I have. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lindholm.
Thank you. Just a few, a few things. One, I really want to thank the Medal of Valor, all the recipients, they recognize so many, and those who've been in Las Vegas and defending the innocent victims. It's just incredible. You are our police, as well as our fire, are there 24/7. We sleep well at night. I'm very grateful for that. I want to thank Deputy Jack Sanders because he was a life-saving Medal of Valor recipient for saving somebody. I think he pulls a teenager from a burning car. Not this year, but he should be recognized for that, too. So he's right here in our, in our midst. I want to thank our fire personnel. I'm sure you were probably there at the, the storage facilities that were burning, and I'm sure you had people there, probably, maybe we can have a report on that, too. And thank you also for always being there for us, and on medical call, too. I want to thank you for that. It's very critical. I'm hoping when we first interviewed and hired our new police chief, he was mentioning that we should have sections identified on the new complexes that are built down in Crown Valley, so that if you're responding to a call, you wouldn't go to just an entire complex, you would have sections that you would know and have some way to identify. And, and maybe, I, I don't know if you were able to do that now, but I would like to see us get that done, as we should have, we used to have a program, and I'm not sure, where we have street numbers where they were painted on our curbs in the city, and I don't know if we still do that. I think that's important for our fire to be able to respond to that, so maybe that's a question we can ask, and we can get, it's been a while. We used to, you were able to pay Boy and Girl Scouts who would come and do that on your curb, so I don't know what the process is now, but I'd like to see that. So if you're calling 911, and they're trying to respond and help you, we can make it easier and quicker for them. So those are my comments, and maybe we can hear later how, how that does, and, but then thank, thank you, thank to all our police and our fire for all you do.
Thank you, Councilmember Lindholm. Councilmember Davies?
Thank you, Mayor. Want to let you know that we've welcomed a Chief Fennessey, who is our new chief for OCFA, and we're excited to have him. And I want to thank again all of you for the great work you did with that Laguna Hills Fire. That was a four-alarm fire in a storage area. It was huge. They had over 100 firefighters, and the skill that you bring to the table, there was not one injury, and you had a lot of roofs falling in, so, you know, thank you to your staff. Glad to see no one was injured. Just a little bit of legislation news. I attended the ACCOC Legislation Committee. This year, obviously, last year was big on transportation. This year is big on housing. I was happy to see that the Weiner Bill failed from the beginning. That was one that we've all been looking for, and this was a bill that basically let you come in by transit areas, and obviously, we have the MetroLink, but there really wasn't a strong definition of what transit was. It could have been, is it by a bus stop, because a bus goes by? But anyways, he wanted to leave the bill as was, and I do believe that committee members wanted to make some amendments, and he said no, so that's why basically it failed at that point. But what this bill did is allowed a developer to come in and, and put up homes, but what it would do is for affordable living homes, it would actually bypass the planning commission, so they didn't have to come to the city. They could actually override that, which obviously took local control away, and that's really our, our main concern there. So I'm sure it'll be back, but from what I know, that it did fail, that it'll come back, but it has to come back as it was, and that they won't allow it to be amended. So might be something else that comes down the line, but at least for now, I know that ACCOC had opposed this, as was the League of City. I was up in Sacramento last week with the League of City. I sit on the board, and one of the main measures I want to talk about, it's called Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of 2018. Familiar with, in 2014, we had Prop 47, 2016, Prop 57. These were taking felons, moving them down to misdemeanors, changing the amount of which would be considered a felon from our 250 or 450, I think, to 950. But the bottom line is, we've definitely seen an increase in crime, whether it's petty crime or even seriouser crimes. And so what this does is it kind of undoes, undoes, boy, I'm really having it. It changes what we have there. How's that? But it'll really hit the Prop 57. Prop 57, just to give you a little idea, Prop 57 shockingly allows for early release of criminals convicted of crimes like rape of an unconscious person, trafficking a child for sex, assault of a peace officer, felon domestic violence. And these were considered nonviolent crimes because they run under the definition of violent. So what this bill will do is help overdue, undo this, and that's really what's important. And some of the things it will do is restore the collection of DNA for many crimes, so it can be used to solve rape and murder cases, fix the current definition of nonviolent crimes that makes an inmate eligible for early release, reform the parole system that allows a felon to go in and out of jail five times in seven months before murdering a police officer in Whittier, and reform theft laws, so serial thefts cannot, thieves cannot steal over and over. If you look at like Walmart, our grocery stores, they're taking a hit. Basically, if you don't catch them shoplifting in the beginning, they can walk through their door, and that's what they're doing. So as long as they're under $950, and they get caught, all it is, is a $45 ticket at that, at that point. And that's just for that store. They can keep going at that point. So they're losing a lot of money, especially when it comes to retail, so this will change that as well. So if you see they're, out there getting signatures, you can go online, but this is again, Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of 2018. If you haven't already signed it, I recommend that you do, and I know that the mayor and I did discuss putting this on the next agenda to hopefully support this measure. They're getting close to their signatures needed, and I do want to let you know that we did have lunch when I was with the league with Governor Brown. He completely opposes this because this was one of his, he did support Prop 47 and Prop 57 and the early release and the, and having, you know, too many people in jail, and so this is something he doesn't support. He actually said he would spend at least $14 million to make sure this doesn't get passed. So we all have different definitions, but as they say, you know, it's time for us to protect the victims and not the criminals. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Davies. Okay, so let's see if you guys left anything for me on my list. I'm crossing off. I think there's a couple of themes here. A lot of time at meetings and engaging with other officials were spent with the school district on a number of different issues, but primarily safety. So with Councilmember Minigar and Chief McDaniel and Sergeant Songer, we did the school site assessment over at Molton. And then also, Mayor Protem and City Manager Ridge and I, we went to the district, and we were in their Emergency Operations Center, and they went through their whole plan of what they do and the interconnection between them and the city. So we did review that. And then, public safety. I mean, my favorite breakfast of the year and my favorite lunch of the year were all in the same week. We had the All Hands Breakfast with all of our deputy sheriffs, and then we had the Medal of Valor luncheon. So thank you to your team, and to your team, too, Chief Adams, for keeping our community safe. On April 19th, I had the South Orange County Mayors Association meeting in San Clemente. That was the South County mayors making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. And then on April 21st, had several events. The Earth Day, which was hosted by the Nigal Botanical Preserve, they always do a fantastic job. We have lots of volunteers coming out. And then, still that morning, a little bit later, I had the Extraordinary Lives Foundation High Five Carnival, and that is for pediatric mental health awareness. And then I, I think that is something that we really need to pay attention to, because what we're seeing happening with our children, with the stress in schools, being it either to, what they're hearing on the news about the school shootings, or the stress with the high achievers in our schools, or the suicides that they're seeing happening. We really need to heighten our awareness about mental health for our young people. And then after that, I was asked to go to the Laguna Nigal Women's Club. They had a membership tea for bringing in new members. Congratulations to Ziad Masboudi on a very successful H2O for HOA. City Hall was full with water providers, homeowners association managers, contractors, learning all more about that very important resource, water. And then a terrific performance at Nigal Hills Middle School that night for the Night of the Arts. And on Friday, had the second Meet the Mayor Leadership Breakfast here in City Hall over in the community room. So had close to 50 leaders from the different nonprofit and service organizations in our city, and this was building on the first event that we had. So this time, they actually got together and were able to sit down and talk to see how our organizations can collaborate, and I'm a big believer in collaboration and creating synergy with our groups, so that we don't keep doing the same thing individually, but if we work together, that we can create more and have a much more greater impact on our community. So I actually have seen emails come from different organizations promoting another organization's event to their membership. So I think they're working well together, and they're seeing how that they can build on that, and even maybe collaborate on having some joint events. So I just, huge thank you to all the volunteers in our city with the many different organizations that we have, but also for those people who, or maybe the 20%, those who step up into leadership roles and to lead that organization to meet its goals and objectives. So I appreciate all of them taking their time on Friday morning to come here, to meet each other and talk about how they can work together. And just the final reminder, the word of the month for May is tribute, so think about what you can do in tribute to those that we're going to remember on Memorial Day later this month. So, and with that, I will close, and I will pass it on to Chief McDaniel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for the kind words about our breakfast. I appreciate the city's support. As I'm able to tell my guys on a frequent basis, we're extremely lucky to work in this city. You guys are a model of support, and the relationship we have is second to none, so thank you for that. I received some question about, last weekend, many cities had a prescription take-back day. We have in our city a box in police services that we take it back every single day. So I want our citizens to know they can come eight to five any day and drop off their prescriptions. I'm actually a fan of that. I don't like these pills to sit around, so please bring them in as you use them or as you're done with them, and we'll dispose of them properly. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Director Erlinson?
Yes, Madam Mayor. One item of note. On Thursday, May 10th, at 2:00 PM here at City Hall, the city will be hosting its fiscal year 1819 Budget Workshop, and I encourage the citizens of this great city to attend and participate. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Dixon? Chief Adams?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Davies, for the mention of Chief Fennessey's arrival. Yes, we are very happy about that. We pinned his badge on him this last Thursday, and just Monday, yesterday, he was elected as the Western Region Sponsoring Agency Chief for the FEMA Urban Search and Rescue Program. He will represent all eight California task forces and Washington One. So when he speaks, and we speak through him, both to the central part of the country and the eastern part of the country, Chief Fennessey will have that voice, and he will also speak to the program office. So it's a big deal for us, and we are very happy he is here. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Roseberry?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Masboudi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for acknowledging the H2O for HOAs. We also hosted a couple of weeks ago, a compost giveaway, the help of our officers and some volunteers, and at 6:00 in the morning, the line was backed up all the way to Nigal on Alicia, so it's a very, very successful event as well. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk Gomez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to thank you and the council for recognizing Municipal Clerks Week. I believe this is the first time that we've done it in this city, so I'm very proud of that. A lot of clerks were encouraging the cities that haven't done it yet to do it, so I really appreciate it. Thank you for the recognition, and I serve this city very proudly. Thank you.
It's our pleasure to recognize you and Deputy City Clerk Lauer.
Thanks.
Director Giglio?
Thank you, Mayor. There will be a free presentation called Living with Coyotes in Laguna Nigal this Thursday, May 3rd, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM here at City Hall. Anyone who's interested could register by emailing registration@cityoflaguninigal.org. It's also listed on our city website. And our brand-new summer recreation brochure, the summer recreation brochure has been mailed to homes and has information about all of our day camps, special events, swim lessons, there's a bunch of great information in there, so take a look. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Bell?
Just wanted to let you know that based on room availability, I'm trying to tentatively schedule some Brown Act training for our elected officials and appointed officials. So tentatively, I'm looking at May 21st and May 31st. One is a Monday, and one is a Thursday. I figured out you have a lot of meetings on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. So that's the tentative schedule for now, and I'll go ahead and notify, sorry, each of the attendees, once we have the dates solidified.
Okay, thank you. Director Oxley?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lindholm had a question about addresses painted on street curbs. About a year ago, we blanketed the entire city, so that those are, all the numbers are fresh in town. That's all, thank you.
And is that also done for gated communities, or just non-gated?
No, non-gated. We do not paint numbers on private properties.
Okay, thank you.
What about the buildings? Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. What about the buildings or the apartments, are they able to be divided into sections so that police and fire can respond to them in an appropriate way?
No, I think we'll have to wait for a report back from staff on that, let them look into that. City Manager Ridge?
Just a couple of items. First, I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that the Chet Holyfield Building is undergoing a feasibility study by the federal GSA, and we're watching closely to see what they conclude in their report as far as what the future is of that building, which as you know, is in our wonderful city. And then, I attended a meeting last week with the Matrix Consulting Group, along with the city managers from all the Orange County cities that contract with the Sheriff's Department that participated in the cost study that the group is conducting for us. And they did give us a, so as you recall, it's a cost and efficiency study at how the Orange County Sheriff Department allocates overhead and costs to the contract cities. And it's a little slow-going, they aren't anticipating having any type of a final draft report until really the end of August 2018. So there isn't going to be any information that's going to come out of this, it's going to impact our budget for 1819, but maybe we'll be armed with the information for 1920. And then, I did attend a city managers' meeting over at OCFA, and was able to stick around for the badge-pinning ceremony for Chief Fennessy. It was a beautiful ceremony, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before we adjourn? Okay, this concludes our regular city council meeting, we are now adjourned at 8:48 PM.